You're not mad at me, are you?
No.
You slammed that down?
No, I'm just saying.
Just mad period, is that okay?
Whatever you want to call it.
It is a tablet I am just coming in. It's pretty good.
I'm fine, how are you? Yeah, yes, well, since we're only going to change the phone number, that's all we're going to do because it's not going to go directly to Grand Park. So we're just... Well, yeah, but him put the wrong one in there, so it's got us in there twice. Well, I think Brian is.
Are you ready to go, sir? All right. Good evening, everybody, October fourteenth. Seems late in the month, but this is the second Monday, isn't it? That's right. Good, good to have so many people here. Full three-page agenda, so bear with us if you would, a lot of exciting things. We've got some very big announcements also to make, some updates we're going to talk about, about Grand Park, we're going to talk about Kai Chuck is going to update us on our recent trip to Japan. And so we've got a lot of, a lot of things to do tonight. So I'd like to get started with our pledge of allegiance and then our invocation. We have Pastor Rob Griben Strogg from On-Site International Prayers visiting us again. Thank you so much, Rob, for doing this, we so much appreciate it. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor?
Let's pray. Lord, I bless, I honor, and I thank you tonight for the privilege of praying ahead of this meeting this evening. Lord, it's no small thing that a community still invites prayer to the Most High to be said ahead of important meetings in important times that we live in. Father, tonight, as I pray, I ask that you would provide your supernatural wisdom to each man and woman in this place and each man and woman who will be reading and hearing about what takes place this evening and the days, weeks, months to come. Father, I ask that you give wisdom to our current and future city leaders as they continue to navigate the next steps forward for this community as it grows, as it expands, as it wrestles with challenges, great and small. I'm reminded, Lord, that you are the Lord of all, things great and small alike, and so that we come to you, we bow before you, seeking your best, not only this evening, but in each moment of our lives, apart and away from this place as well. Have your way in this place, have your way out of this place as well. Lastly, Lord, may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be pleasing to you tonight, and if they're not quite there yet, please cause them to become so, for your honor and for your glory. I bless you tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so very much. Looks like we have everybody here tonight. Ms. Bulgeric, how are you? I know you've been under the weather, are you okay?
Still a little under the weather.
But better, okay, great to have you. Dr. President Keane, it's your meeting, sir.
Will the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum?
Joe Edwards?
Here.
Bob Workay?
Here.
Mark Keane?
Here.
Jim A.
Here.
Cindy Spaljerry?
Here.
Steve Hoover?
Here.
Chuck Blayman?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. There is one change to the agenda, and that is ordinance nineteen fifty-three, the twenty-twenty salary ordinance for non-elected people that will be deferred to the October twenty-eighth meeting. I did say last month that we were not going to have an October meeting, but we find it necessary to have an Oc... I find it necessary to have an October twenty-eighth meeting, so we will be at Grand Park Events Center on the twenty-eighth because this meeting will be set up for early voting. So we will take up the salary ordinance nineteen fifty-three at that time. So that's a deletion from tonight's agenda. And with that, move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council Meeting of September twenty-third?
So moved.
Moved by Joe Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover. Any questions, discussion? With that, we'll take this by voice, vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, moving on to claims, I need a motion for approval of claims.
So moved.
Moved by Jim A, is there a second? Second, second by Joe Edwards. Any questions, any claim questions? Seeing none, let's do this by voice, vote, too, all in favor approving claims, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous also, so we will now move on to special presentations. William, you want to come on forward? I don't know if somebody was going to introduce you, or you need no introduction and so you're up to give us an update?
I don't know why William needs an introduction, he heads the largest sports park in America, if not the world, but I thought it'd be good to give you a little update on, on what is going on, on, in our economic environment driver, and who better to present than William Knox?
Good evening, councilors, William Knox, Director of Grand Park Sports Campus, and thank you for allowing us to present tonight. We're going to just take a few minutes of your time to talk a little bit about Grand Park and, in particular, the finances at the park. Capital versus operational will be our focus for tonight. We're going to share a lot of information in a short period of time, I'm on the clock, Vicki, time me as I get out of my seat, so I'm going to try to stick to our deadline. But before we jump into the numbers, I do want to allow the mayor to say a few words to somewhat remind us of why the park was developed.
Yeah, that gets confusing sometime, it's, you know, as I often say, it's a good Sunday when I'm not in the front page of The Star, and maybe you saw that, you know, we made The Star again Sunday, and the, these articles are... William was planning to do this a long time before that, but we've really, we've got to separate, why did we build Grand Park? We did not build it to honor baseball or soccer, or to make money from day-to-day operations. Grand Park was built to create a permanent tax base of the hospitality industry. So when people ask me, is Grand Park working? You, all you have to do is look at the over one billion dollars of private investment that has made, been made in the city of Westfield commercially over the past five years. Now, some people may say, well, not all of that is due to Grand Park, okay, cut it in half. A half a million dollars of new investment that is paying taxes every year, that is really why we built Grand Park. The rest of it has been kind of fun. It's been truly a national, if not international, identity for Westfield. Its operations are beginning to pay its way totally, and the debt, and this is where it gets really, really complicated, the debt was calculated to be totally covered by the TIF districts in the year two thousand and twenty-two or twenty-three. And we are right on schedule to do exactly that, contrary to what the Indianapolis Star just reported. So, William?
Yes.
A little more, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, and I will speak in great detail to part of this equation, and then Ms. Tammy Havard will come up and speak to some of our capital expenditures and revenue as well. But in addition to providing an economic base for the city, the park has also enhanced the quality of life for its residents. So this little pinwheel here shows essentially how Grand Park has really looked to grow various areas within the city related to its economic growth as well as the improved lifestyle for residents. You may have heard and seen this previously, but sports is a big deal throughout the country and also here in the city of Westfield. Fifteen-billion-dollar industry, when I started in this industry many years ago, this number was a lot smaller. It continues to grow for many reasons. Complexes like Grand Park are continuing to develop, but also this generation has a huge interest in allowing their kids to participate in sports. And of all of the tourism sectors, it's the one that is most resistant to the downturn in the economy. A lot of times you will find corporate and leisure travel will decline during a recession, usually sports tourism continues to stay steady, and that's because of the commitment parents have made to their families. Grand Park generates about eighty thousand trackable room nights a year. I feel that this estimate is somewhat conservative because in addition to that eighty thousand room nights that we can prove because they booked through our housing system, we estimate another seventy thousand room nights are generated from visiting spectators, coaches, and fans. So we know what we can get our arms around as it relates to that eighty thousand, but we also know that there's a lot of other business, spectators coming to the campus that we're not able to quantify. Many of you have seen this many times, I put it up here just to state that when I go out and talk to people about Grand Park, when I say four hundred acres, they typically think that that's part of our full development for the campus as far as items outside of just the playing surfaces. Lake Point in Atlanta is a hundred, I'm sorry, a thousand-acre complex, but that is inclusive of their hotel community, their hospitality areas, and things of that nature. To date, Grand Park is still the largest sports campus in the country, and we house the largest indoor building in the country as well with the Grand Park Events Center. Spooky Nuke out east is another complex, is another facility that has an indoor complex that's a hundred thousand square foot building, but it includes a lot more than just our synthetic surfaces, so it's not comparing apples to apples. These are some of the demographics for the campus, two-point-five million visits a year, that's how many people we have coming in and out of the campus on an annual basis. Total games played, just under thirty thousand, which is remarkable. And then the hotel room nights, I mentioned eighty thousand originally, that's from Grand Park, this, I'm sorry, from the campus, this number also includes the Pacers Athletic Center, as you know, is operated and is a private development on campus. As many of you are aware, our mayor was featured in HBO Real Sports, and this is just a list of a few of the accolades that the campus has gotten. That one article there has, has really done a lot of good for us, not only from the campus standpoint, but the city of Westfield. It, it got a lot of traction and a lot of play throughout the country. I'm going to pause here because as I mentioned to you when I began, we're going to talk about two different areas of finances for the park. Capital versus operations. There is someone far more educated and, and has a much more, much better understanding of the capital side, and I will come back to you and speak to the operational side. So I'm going to bring up Tammy, who will talk a little bit about our financial strategy from a capital standpoint for the campus.
So, I just want to talk on the capital expenses and clarify, as William mentioned, that there are capital expenses having to do with the sports campus and there are operating expenses having to do with the sports campus. So first, on the capitals piece, there are four main debt services that we pay semi-annual debt services on. And those pay for the real estate at Grand Park, the field and the diamond construction, the Grand Park Events Center, construction, as well as the turf cost. And those costs are about six-point-three million dollars. So those are the expenses. Now, we have a distinct strategy for funding the capital side versus the operating side. So again, I'm going to speak on how our strategy is on funding the capital side. So as you can see, that our strategy has always been to have the capital costs paid by the tax increment financing districts. And as you can see by this chart, we are actively implementing that strategy right now. By the end of next year, over fifty-five percent of our capital expenses will be paid by the TIF districts, that's just next year. And now William can talk on the operating, which is the day-to-day type activities.
So I will now switch gears to really focus on some of the operational expenses, and as you know, those are the day-to-day items that we cover to make sure the campus can operate at its full capacity. So we have annually a six-million-dollar operating budget for the campus, and that includes everything from contractual services, operating personnel, and some capital replacement costs. This is our twenty-twenty budget estimates, which will include salaries for the first time. So when we look to say that the campus operationally is sound, as of twenty-twenty, that will be inclusive of all expenses from the operational standpoint from the campus. From the revenue side, this is a mix of all the things that go into the seven million dollars of revenue that is generated from the campus, as well as the food and beverage that's listed on here as well. As you can see, the vast majority of our rental, of our fees are generated through our facility rental costs. And all of this information, just for your reference, is pulled directly from the OpenGov site. So this is available to everybody who can pull it out and kind of see exactly how the operating revenues work. So most instances, when you're looking at budgets for city departments, you only focus on the expenses, because that, that typically draws down from the general fund. At Grand Park, we have to pay very close attention to the revenues, because that is what allows us to spend that money in the expense category. So as I mentioned earlier, well, let me go through this first, these are some of the users on the campus. These are some of our primary users over here that have multi-year annual agreements with the campus, and then we also have tenants on campus as well that actually have offices and work day-to-day out of the complex as well. We have one ground lease with ProX, and then we also have a company that manages the diamond side of the complex on our behalf, which is Bullpen Tournament. So these, these are a lot of the groups that make up a lot of that revenue that we generate on an annual basis for the campus. As I mentioned earlier, we're in a very good position as it relates to the campus. In twenty-twenty, we'll be fully self-sustaining with inclusive of salaries. One thing that we did change for this year's budget, I'm sorry, for twenty-twenty's budget, we did reduce the salary line item by about a hundred and five thousand dollars, so that we could adjust moving forward for new staff that may be onboarded in the future. But we did make that change this year, and as you can see, this is money in, money out, we're kind of, we're in, we're in the black to the tune of about a million dollars. This just shows the growth of the hotels in the area since Grand Park opened, and prior to me taking this role here at Grand Park, I worked with Hamilton County Tourism and Hamilton County Sports Authority. So I'm very familiar with some of the struggles we had early on with securing hotel rooms, but this kind of shows the trajectory and the progression of the hotel growth. All of these are in play with the exception of the one at the top, all the way to the right, which is coming by twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, and that's the Courtyard Marriott. So very excited about this, this allows our guests to stay a lot closer to the campus and overall have a better experience when they visit the campus. This is where I would usually send it back to the mayor, but essentially, and he may want to chime in here, but he alluded to this earlier. In essence, what the city has done is made a public investment of eighty-five million dollars for a return of one-point-two billion, and that was very intentional, that was the goal of this all along, and, and that's kind of where we are today.
So yeah, William, that last, I mean, that last slide really says it all. Why did we create Grand Park? Why did we take a chance of investing eighty-five million dollars? It was to create a tax base, which you see on the last line there. And that tax base does not go away. Because of the nature of Grand Park, when we have the hotels, the restaurants, we are not offering tax abatements in those areas, as you, as you know. In some of our other endeavors to bring in businesses, as you will entertain later this evening, there are tax abatements in order for us to compete with other cities. Grand Park has created simply a very unique, profitable, investment environment for the hospitality industry. And it is paying off immensely.
Any questions?
Any questions for me and the councilors?
Thank you for your time.
I know this was extracted from OpenGov, but is this presentation going to be standalone and as part of this, the meeting, when people, if people want to hear this, they could do that?
Yes.
Okay.
William, thank you for the wonderful job you've done out there and taking over the facility and getting these results, they're fantastic.
It's been an honor. Thank you.
Thanks, William. You also have another presentation you want to introduce now that your jet lag is over?
Jet lag, yeah, Kai, come on up, Kai Chuck. Ladies and gentlemen, those of you that have had the pleasure of meeting Kai, you know, he joined us several months ago after some ten, twelve years with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation in charge of Indiana's Asian quest and foreign quest. And with the, with the addition of the Bastion Toyota facility, we felt like it was very necessary that we look at enticing other Asian companies to invest in Westfield. Indiana has a huge history of Asian investment, some three-hundred-and-some companies across Indiana, over sixty-five thousand employees, and we also know that they, they tend to cluster, so to speak. And so in meeting Kai several, almost a year ago now, and he is a Westfield resident, that was also a big plus, we talked about, hey, how could we team together, bring him onboard? And so one of the first things that we did was, he arranged a trip for he and I and Todd to Japan, having explained to us very successfully that the Japanese protocol is such that if a company invests in a U.S. city, they expect that mayor to visit their facility in Japan in a pretty short order. Well, I wasn't totally ready to do that, I mean, my foreign travel up until this year had been about as far away as French leg. And Kai convinced us all that this was something we all needed to do, and I tell you what, it was, it was an experience of a lifetime. And I'll let Kai kind of go over what we did there, but here's what I learned, is that the people with their Indiana Economic Development, IEDC, and the people over in Japan that Kai has known for ten, fifteen years, this guy commands a lot of respect over there. And when the, the head of the IEDC came up and kind of awkwardly gave you a great big bear hug because he missed your services at IEDC, I'm going, yes, I think we got the right guy. So Kai, go over what we did, would you?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, councilors, I'm here to give you an update and a summary of our Japan trip, which the mayor had fully described. The Japan trip occurred from September third through the eleventh, and some of the cities we highlighted were Nagoya, Utsunomiya, and Tokyo. And these were the goals of our trip, one is to welcome Toyota Industries to the city of Westfield to get to know them and for them to get to know us, to market, network, and build relationships with some of the organizations that you see up on top, their logos up there, mainly to make, to raise the profile of the city of Westfield and Grand Park. This is the itinerary for the trip, it's a full day's itinerary for each day, leaving September third and coming back September eleventh from Tokyo. We departed via Indiana to Detroit and Detroit to Nagoya, and then we would depart from Tokyo back to Japan on the eleventh. We arrived on Wednesday, September fourth, in Nagoya, which is the capital city of Aichi Prefecture, and prefecture means state, and it is the capital of Aichi with two-point-three million people. The prefecture is seven-point-five million people, but more importantly, Aichi is second in Japan's GNP of the prefectures. The governor is Mr. Omura, and Mr. Omura has been to Indiana, previously, two years ago, he did come visit Indiana. Indiana and Aichi have a agreement with each other to share a friendship agreement, not exactly sister state, but a friendship agreement between the two state and prefecture. More importantly, Aichi is the Japan Center for Advanced Manufacturing focusing on automotive, aerospace, robotics, and the train industries. We're significantly the top companies in Aichi, including the Toyota Group, which I will elaborate later, Mitsubishi Aircraft Corporation, Makita Tools, you may know them, and also Brother Industries. Nippon Sharo is the company that actually manufactures the Japanese bullet train. Central Japan Rail Company is actually manages the rail system within that region. As you can see, Nagoya is very dense and compact, but even though they are dense and compact, they do, and they are, have new investment, as you see in the lower right-hand corner, in, in a new building construction. On Thursday, September fifth, we had our official meeting with Toyota Industries, or the acronym TCO. We met with Mr. Sasaki, who is the Vice President of Toyota Industries, and he also worked in Indiana and Columbus with the Toyota Industries factory there from two thousand and eight to, I think, two thousand and ten. We also met with Mr. Onishi, who's the CEO of Toyota Industries Corporation, another Mr. Sasaki who is not related, he's the manager of Toyota Advanced Logistics Group, and Mr. Mizuno, who's the General Manager of Toyota Logistics Group. During the meeting, Toyota Industries provided a background of the corporation, the structure, and also the history of the acquisition of Bastion Industries, their plan for Bastion Industries, and the, the group itself. The mayor discussed the city of Westfield, welcoming them, inviting them to visit the city of Westfield and Grand Park, and they also went and preached the history of Westfield and Grand Park. We also left a presentation that we did that was dubbed in Japanese, which we'll highlight later, with Toyota Industries. They did do some research and background on Westfield via the internet, and they're very impressed by Grand Park, by the way. At the end of the meeting, we presented, as, as tradition and protocol, a gift from the city of Westfield, and you see that on this image, it's a quilt made by Kathy Woolridge here, as we would describe it, a piece of Westfield in Japan. And you can see on the screen the Toyota Industries logo, the Bastion... the Bastion Industries logo, the city of Westfield's logo, and the state of Indiana's logo to represent the entire state and city. After the meeting, we did a brief tour of the Takahama Plant, which is on the right here, and that is the forklift plant. During the meeting, they went into detail on the structure of Bastion Industries and the newly organized Toyota Advanced Logistics Group, which is based upon the booming e-commerce industry. This group was developed when they acquired, when they acquired Bastion Industries. They also acquired Vanderlay Industries, which is based in Europe. I think it's based in Holland. That's also in the same sector as Bastion Industries. This is a totally new industry in terms of e-commerce. They're not, you know, they do not have experience in this industry. But because of the, the growth that they see in e-commerce, they decided to invest in this industry. So, on the right-hand side is totally new. On the left-hand side is the traditional Toyota Materials Handling Group, which is basically forklifts and materials handling. So, on that side, they have mainly from pallet trucks to large ocean shipping container movement logistics. And they have a facility here in Indiana, which is Toyota Industrial Manufacturing, based in Columbus. It was in, back in the late nineteen eighties that they established this assembly plant. And it is actually the first Toyota plant here. It supersedes Toyota Motor Manufacturing in Princeton. So, on the left-hand side is the traditional Toyota Materials Handling Group. And on the right-hand side is the newly developed Toyota Advanced Logistics Group. And on, if you notice back here, you see the people that we met with are from Toyota Industries Corporation, the overall corporation oversight, and then the Toyota Advanced Logistics Group from Mr. Sasaki and Mr. Mizuno. And that is reflected here on this chart. During the meeting, they also went into the, a little bit of history about the Toyota Group and the Toyota Group's structure. So, on the left-hand side, you will see the name Toyota. That is the official family name of the company. The company was started in nineteen twenty-six by Sasaki Toyota. And it had, they had a contest within Japan to have a naming of the company. And on the left-hand side, you can see in Japanese kata tana, which is the Japanese language, written the word Toyota, family name. And on the bottom, there is the word Toyota, which is also written in kata tana script. So, they decided the word Toyota during the contest looks better in terms of marketing than the word Toyota. As you can see on the upper right-hand corner, toward the end there, there's a couple of dashes, the ten strokes versus the lower end on the eight strokes, it's missing. So, they decided for marketing purposes and to go with the name Toyota based off of that written script. So, they also went into detail on the Toyota family. And this is more significant in, in making sure that it's understood that Bastion's under the Toyota Industries Corporation and not Toyota Motor. So, on the right-hand side, there's a chart of the Toyota Kuretsu, which is the Toyota family of businesses. There are seventeen companies here, and those are the years that they were started. So, in nineteen twenty-six, Toyota Industries was founded and started as a loom company. And today, it is now Toyota Industries, and they still produce looms. And they still produce fabrics mainly for developing markets in Asia. But they also do, they produce airbags for Toyota Motor Corporation. On the right-hand side, you see Toyota Industries, but you also see the Toyota Motor Division was started in nineteen thirty-three, which eventually became Toyota Motor Corporation in nineteen thirty-seven. So, you notice the different logos. Toyota Industries has their own logo, and Toyota Motor has their logo. What's significant about this is that this Kuretsu shares admin, finance, and business plans. So, the main investor in Toyota Industries Corporation is Toyota Motor Corporation. And then also Ison Seiki and Denzo and Toyota, excuse me, Toshu on the lower-hand side also are investors in Toyota Industrial Corporation. Backtracking to the Toyota family, the lineage to the original founder is still around and is the president of Toyota Motor Corporation. You may know him as Akio Toyota. He is the president of Toyota Motor Corporation. He is also president of Toa Real Estate, you see on the left-hand side, which is a real estate company mainly in Japan that holds the real estate. So, this Kuretsu shares a lot of admin, business development, and business strategies, and also finance, which allows them to move quickly in terms of business development situations. So, in Indiana, there are seven Toyota Industries, excuse me, Toyota Kuretsu members in Indiana. That includes Toyota Industries forementioned, Toyota Motor in Princeton, Ison Seiki's North American headquarters is, is in Seymour, Indiana. Denzo has a facility in Jeffersonville. Toyota Boschoku is in Princeton. And then Toyota Toosho is also in Princeton and in Lafayette. And Toyota Gosai is in New Albany. So, as the mayor forementioned before, that Indiana has a long history of Japanese investment, but they also have a very long history within the Toyota and Kuretsu. The following day on September sixth, we joined Governor Holcomb and the delegation to attend the Business Roundtable in Nagoya. Nagoya Chamber of Commerce and the Central Japanese, excuse me, Japan Economic Federation, which is a regional business lobby. You can see the chairs of Nagoya and the Central Economic Foundation are heavily Toyota-centric because in this region Toyota is the main employer in the region. And you can see, as we mentioned, and Central Japan Economic Foundation, the head of that is Chairman Toritzro Toyota, which is the chairman of Toyota Industries, the parent company of Bastion. And Shubi Toyota is the chairman of Boschoku Corporation, Toyota Boschoku. And then Denzo and Toyota Toosho are also represented there. The main topic for this was labor and economic development. That is the hot topic. And the governor asked Mayor Cook to respond to some of the major labor concerns, and the mayor did respond in supporting that the local leadership must get involved with the labor to get involved with also businesses, the school system, to focus in on the labor supply. The following day on September, or excuse me, on Friday evening, we attended the Indiana Reception, Friends of Indiana Reception in Nagoya. And over a hundred and ten Japanese companies attended. And those are some of the logos, some of the companies. The Toyota Group, of course, heavily, heavily involved, but also Mitsubishi Heavy, NTN Corporation, O and K, Itochu, which is a major investment company in Japan. This allowed us to network personally, one-on-one. You can see some of the images where the mayor got a chance to meet some of the business folks. And then on the middle picture there, you can see that is Governor Omura of Aichi Prefecture. On Saturday, we went with, attended with the governor and the first lady to Tochigi Prefecture. So, we traveled from Nagoya to Utsunomiya, which is the capital of Tochigi Prefecture to celebrate the twentieth anniversary of the sister state relationship. Governor Fukuda has been to Indiana many, many times, and he starts his fourth term there. And they presented the governor with a gift that you can see on the lower central there with granite engraved, state logos and prefecture logos. There is also the top picture of Mayor Cook with Governor Fukuda. On Monday, September ninth, was the kickoff of the U.S. Midwest Conference, in which the state of Indiana has been a member for many years. It was established in sixty-seven, and the member states are mainly in the Midwest and Upper Midwest, and comprised of corporations that have direct economic ties with Japan or interested in developing them with them. It rotates, so this year was in Tokyo. Next year, it will be in Chicago, following year in Tokyo, and then in Ohio, then back in Japan, and in twenty twenty-four, it will be in Indiana. The states have a booth that they can promote products within the cities of the states. And you can see on the second picture there, there's William. And we have a pic, we had a video of promoting Grand Park in the city of Westfield that we dubbed in Japanese that we were able to show, along with some marketing materials. We had some bags made up in baseball and soccer ball shapes that have Westfield and Grand Park on it on the right-hand side. Plus, we had a flyer, a one-page flyer in Japanese that promoted the city of Westfield, the demographics, the location, North Point Business Park. On the reverse side was Grand Park, the sports played there, the awards achieved, and the overall overview of Grand Park itself. I can tell you that the baseball bags went first. They're all gone the first day. Soccer ball's a little bit lagging behind, but they were very, very popular. Following in the afternoon, we met with the Federal Business Roundtable, which is the Japanese Business Federation called the Kedandri. And this is the national business lobby in which the entire delegation, including the governor and Mayor Cook, met with the Committee on U.S. Affairs, which was chaired by Mr. Hayakawa, the vice chairman of Toyota Motor Corporation, Mr. Uniki, which is the representative, chairman of Japan Airlines, and Mr. Nagano, who's gone out, excuse me, Nagano, which is Toko Marine Holdings. The major subject matter here was the tariffs in the U.S.-Japan relationship and how we can improve and resolve the issues that we have between the two countries. Because Japan is such a heavy investor in the United States and vice versa, they would like to resolve this and move on and move forward. Tuesday evening, we had the Friends of Indiana Reception in Tokyo, where two hundred, over two hundred and fifty companies attended. That includes not only Japanese companies, but Indiana-based companies in Japan, including Cummins and Lilly and Genesis of Japan. Also Honda, Subaru, Sony. Hitachi also attended, since Tokyo is the capital. Virtually every major Japanese corporation has some sort of representation in Tokyo versus previously in Nagoya. Also attending in Nagoya was the governor of Guma Prefecture, Governor Yamato. Guma Prefecture is the home prefecture of Subaru. And also Governor Fukuda from Tochigi Prefecture also attended. But this, this reception was much more, of course, much larger, but the same, we got to interact with company representatives firsthand. And on Wednesday, September eleventh, was our departure from Tokyo back to Westfield, some six thousand four hundred and eighty-four miles back to Indianapolis. So, the total trip accounted for over thirteen thousand three hundred miles traveled total for the entire trip. And I'll let Mayor Cook elaborate on that picture in the middle.
Yeah, the center picture is not a result of too much sake. Actually, right before I left, my little five-year-old came up, and he said, Pops, that's me, before you go, you need to hang on tight. And I said, what do you mean, on the airplane? Or what, what do you mean, river? He's river, I'm pops. He said, no. See, his dad had showed him on a globe where we're going. And he was all worried that I was going to be upside down for a whole week, and I needed to hang on. So, I sent him this picture, assuring him that we were okay all week. So, it worked out well.
And that's the freezer thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kai. Any questions from council members?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to old business. Ordinance nineteen thirty-two, Atwater PUD, Jonathan.
Excuse me, on advice of attorney, I'm going to recuse myself on this issue.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Jonathan Dorsey with the Community Development Department. For your adoption consideration this evening is the Atwater Plan Unit Development. This proposed project is located north of the intersection of Casey Road and Hundred and Ninety-third Street and west of Six Points Road, totaling approximately one hundred acres in size. This project proposes to change the current AGSF-1 agricultural single-family rule zoning to a modified SF-4 single-family high-density and an SFA single-family attached zoning. The proposed development has a maximum of two hundred and seventy-five new dwellings between detached single-family homes and duplex units. This item first came before you on the August twelfth meeting and has held its public hearing at the September third Advisory Plan Commission. Since the public hearing, the project's made a number of changes to address comments of staff, council, commission, and residents through changes to its buffer requirements on the northwest portion of the site, its total number of permitted units, building standards, garage standards, lot landscaping, and clarification to the timing of its amenities. This is coming to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission of a vote to six to one. Petitioner, the representative are here this evening, but do not plan on making presentations. Staff and the petitioner will be available for questions, should there be any. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash thirty-two?
Move to approve ordinance nineteen dash thirty-two, Atwater PUD.
Motion by Steve Hoover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Harkay. Discussion, comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Bob Harkay?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jemake?
Yes.
Joett?
Cindy Spalgeri?
No.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one, four to one, five to one, sorry.
Thank you. Next item, ordinance nineteen dash thirty-four, Dane.
Evening, counsel. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the proposed amendment to the one hundred and eighty-first Street PUD, which, as you may recall, proposes to add warehousing and distribution with, excuse me, with outside storage as a temporary permitted use on the property as well as a site plan and character exhibits for a hotel and restaurant on parcel E located at the southeast corner of Wheeler Road and Hundred and Eighty-first Street. This item was introduced at the August twelfth City Council meeting, had its public hearing at the September third Plan Commission meeting. And since that time, the petitioner has revised their proposal so that the maximum height of products located in the outside storage and display area is ten feet rather than twelve feet. And they propose to limit materials stored in this area to roofing shingles and any pallets that they may be delivered upon. Additionally, the proposed parking lot south of the Wheeler Road entrance to the property has been removed from the site plan. This item received a unanimous favorable recommendation at the Plan Commission's October seventh meeting and is up for adoption consideration this evening. Eric Dowthitt from Church Churchill Antrim is present this evening. He would like to make a brief statement, after which he will be available for questions. I will be available if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
Eric Dowthitt, partner with Church Churchill Antrim, one sixteen North Union here in Westfield. As part of the public hearing, one of the neighbors requested that we put up some shielding on the fence on the west side. We've committed to do that. However, I drove by today, and that wasn't up yet. I just wanted to emphasize that that will be installed, even though it isn't quite up yet. We've promised to do that as quickly as possible. The tenant who's responsible for it hasn't put it up. So, we hope to have that up shortly. I just wanted to again acknowledge on the record that is a commitment that we have made to that neighbor.
Thank you. Do you have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash thirty-four?
Move to approve ordinance nineteen thirty, nineteen dash thirty-four, the one hundred and eighty-first Street PUD Amendment five.
Motion by Bob Harkay. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Jemake. Discussion?
At APC, I had requested that fencing be added to that storage area to totally screen from the north, east, and west.
Yes.
Is that part of the ordinance now?
It should be part of the ordinance. I don't know if it was officially added. I will make sure that is added as part of the final ordinance, and it's a, we'll make a commitment to that presently to the extent that it was not worked into the, the final ordinance that's before you today.
So to get my support for this, that commitment needs to be part of the ordinance. If those of you who made the motion agree with that.
That was my question, too.
And I am certainly happy to incorporate that requirement as part of the previously stated motion.
So the motion and the second both agree that that be part of the?
I mean, that was brought up at Plan Commission and that was before the vote of six to one. So that, to me, that was part of the recommendation and it should be included.
And we agree and that commitment is made to the extent that it wasn't worked into the PD you have in front of you. We apologize.
Given that change, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one. On the, what about the parking area that lower left?
Certainly, after talking to council and staff, this parking area right here was unnecessary for purposes of count, staff had requested since that was going to be a temporary parking staff, or location anyway, that we originally put that in gravel. However, after talking to certain members of council, they requested that that wasn't going to be used as active parking, that we instead keep it as grass because that would be a more appropriate use. Therefore, there'd be no temporary parking, no one would be tempted to have any temporary parking there, and it would be a better look there on Wheeler Road until there was final development that happened on that location or otherwise to the east.
So you expect additional improvements to be made in that area, just not parking? Is that correct, not primarily for parking?
At this point, we expect no improvements to be made right there. However, we don't expect any improvements to be made right there. However, we do expect improvements to eventually come over here. And when that happens, to the extent that we need to redo our plan, either to extend any of the drainage we have there or otherwise accomplish any of the improvements we need on Wheeler Road, we thought it would be better to keep that blank and empty at this time. Staff also didn't want us to attract or to pave over that, quite frankly, if we're gonna have to rip it up again in the future. So since that parking isn't needed for our use counts, we all decided it'd be better to keep that at grass.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then the motion will include the screening that was agreed to by the petitioner. It's been pointed out by some of the counselors. So with that, clerk, please call the roll.
Jemake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Harkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerry?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, on to ordinance 19-38, Union Square, Grand Junction PUD, Pam.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Pam Howard with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for your consideration, I have a proposed new planned unit development district to be known as Union Square at Grand Junction PUD to accommodate mixed-use development. This four-acre site is located at the southwest corner of State Road 32 and Union Street and is currently zoned a mix of multifamily one and local business historic districts. The proposed ordinance would permit a mixed-use development consisting of multifamily and commercial uses and contains standards to guide the development of the real estate. Couple of changes have been made since the August 12th introduction, including the addition of a requirement that the petitioner receive community input through a public design process prior to development plan approval. This item comes to you with unanimous favorable recommendation from the October 7th Plan Commission meeting. Petitioner and their representative are here. They do not plan to present, but are available for questions as may if you have any of the department. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion on ordinance 19-38?
I move to approve ordinance 19-38.
Motion by Jemake, is there a second?
Second.
Steve was first, second by Steve Hoover. And a photo finish. With that, questions, comments from council?
One of the things I have asked, I, well, I better back up a little. I think this is a good redevelopment project. I mean, if there ever needs to be redevelopment, this is the place for it, right here. One of the things I did ask the developer, who's not here this evening, he's got representation, I think, here, is that if they can incorporate some design of existing structures, like, I don't know how that would work because I'm not good at those things, but like the old firehouse, some, some brick, and something to resemble, you know, what might look like the old drugstore where we used to meet the fan bus when we would come to town. But some, something that would take us a little back to what was already there. That's important to fewer and fewer people, but as you can see by my gray hairs, it's still important to me. And so he's agreed to do that, within reason, of course, and I think that, I look favorable upon that.
Other comments?
One question, it's got, one of the standards is no maximum building height. And that, that's kind of concerning. I, I know that we're not planning to do, you know, a 30-story building or something, obviously, but without a maximum building height, I know if nothing else, we're limited by the helicopter landing situation that we have with River View Hospital. But is there a reason that we have it listed as no maximum?
Good evening, Rebecca McGuckin, Old Town Companies, 31 First Street Southwest. It's just going with the underlying zoning that's already there, but incorporated into our project, we would need to support the parking there as well. So I feel like that in and of itself limits how far we would take it.
In, in the concept plans, it looks like the maximum you're looking at in terms of concept is four stories. And that's not with every building, but that's with a few of the buildings potentially.
Mm-hmm. And you'll see the range there in the zoning was three to six, and we even adjusted it to two, and that was in response to community feedback and some of those character images as well.
I know I've had a lot of people, I shouldn't say a lot, but I've had several people contact me about, concerned about staying with the building height at two stories around the corner to be consistent with what we have already there. So when we go through development plan review and all that, I'm sure that will be taken into account.
Yes.
Any comments from council?
Just minor, I'm not aware that the landing patterns had anything to do with the height restrictions in this area. In this speci, in this specific location?
I think so.
Whatever, I thought that the landing patterns were more to a different direction. I'm sure it's not a big deal. It is what it is, but.
That'll be addressed during TAC.
Exactly.
I know, I know they demonstrated at least two different entries, depending on prevailing winds and what might be going on.
I'm just gonna echo Joe's comment. I think that since the Grand Junction has a lot of things in it that relate to Westfield history, that even though there might be fewer and fewer people, look at that downtown area, the fact that you're willing to do a public input process and hopefully look at the historical ties that are there and some diverse architecture to, this is, this is the signature development for the Grand Junction to start everything off right. So I think it's really important and, and to do that and to give that history some input is really important.
I will add for each of the council members, some of you may already be aware that we have been in touch with Mark the last day with the Indiana landmarks. And I know that I've heard from community members as well, they have, they have a representative that's helping them from Indiana landmark. So we intend to walk the site with the engineer and see what's possible. We are restricted by things like State Road 32 and what ends up happening in that direction, but we're aware and moving in the direction of gaining that feedback as well as solving it from the engineering standpoint.
Any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerry?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jemake?
Yes.
Bob Harkay?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, next item, ordinance 19-42, the 2019 GeoBond. John?
Good evening, John Rogers, the Director of Economic Development. Before you this evening is the adoption of the 2019 GeoBond. I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might still have. Again, this is our capital project or capital activities. This is mostly for the vehicles and equipment, but we do use it for some road activity.
Okay, may I have a motion on ordinance 19-42 before discussion?
Move to approve ordinance 19-42, the 2019 General Obligation Bond.
Motion by Bob Harkay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck Lehman, discussion. No discussion, then let's move on for adoption consideration. Please call the roll.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerry?
Yes.
Jemake?
Yes.
Bob Harkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Now on to 19, ordinance 19-52, appropriating the proceeds of the GeoBonds. John?
Again, this is a part of the standard adoption process. The funds would be used for vehicles, equipment, and a few road projects.
Do I have a motion on ordinance 19-52?
So move.
Move by Joe Edwards, second?
Second.
Second by Jemake, discussion. I'm just gonna ask the question. This is something we do every year. This is really a cash flow, keeping our capital assets up to date and functional and.
That is correct. It's part of the obsolescent strategy.
And, and just as a secondary thing, the state of Indiana actually, in budget development, encourages the acquisition of debt for some strange reason. So this is a way that we keep money in Westfield as opposed to going elsewhere.
That is part of the strategy, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Jemake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Harkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerry?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
I think you're Todd tonight at this point in time. It's Todd's not back, so the adoption of the 2020 budget, who's doing that?
Yes, I can address this. Tonight is, we'll be asking you for approval of the 2020 budget. Public hearing was held September 23rd. I know Tammy and John are both here to answer any further questions the council may have. I don't think we've received any to be addressed this evening, but would ask for you to adopt our 2020 budget.
Do I have a motion on ordinance 19-43, the 2020 budget?
Move to approve ordinance 19-43, 2020 budget.
Motion by Steve Hoover, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Harkay, questions, comments? I'm gonna ask a question, so I don't know if John or Tammy wants to be the one day. Since I missed the hearing and I missed the workshop, I just want to make sure for some clarification on this.
Absolutely.
We are holding our, we are holding our tax rate flat.
Correct, flat or declining.
With budgeting the way it is in the state of Indiana, and I'll, I'll make an aside first, I was never in favor of TIFs when they were first adopted. I thought we went too far with those, but I was in a different capacity at that time. But now with TIFs and with budget development, if we were to put TIF area back on, the tax rolls, just like if we reduce our budget, we, basically, we have the same impact because of maximum levy constraints put on us by the DLGF. Is that correct?
Correct. Our maximum levy, our property tax revenue can only increase by the 3.5%, and we received special legislation to get an additional 6%. But our net assessed value growth is 11.8%. So our, our growth is much higher than what the state allows. So even if the TIF were to come and flow into our net assessed value, we would not be able to capture property tax dollars for that value.
So my follow-up question to that, because you answered that perfectly, my follow-up question is because we'll still collect the money, but we can't capture it because of max levies, Westfield residents then lose out on controlling where, how that money is spent because that money ends up in one entity that does not have maximum levies, and that's the county. So the county budget really captures almost all of that revenue.
The county has a few funds that are not restricted by the maximum levy and as the city does as well with the cumulative capital development fund. But even the capture in those is so miniscule that it, it would not have a great effect on those entities. And as a resident, you are still only paying 1% of the assessed value of the gross assessed value of your home. And so again, there would be no change in tax bill. Even if the city's rate went to zero, the tax bill for the resident would still be exactly the same.
So there is really no relationship because of the 1% tax caps between a tax bill and a tax rate?
Correct.
But we want to avoid losing revenue to the city and having it go to other entities is one of our major focuses with the budget, where it's at?
Correct. So of that 1% that is remitted by a resident, it is proportioned out to all of the taxing units. So if a home is worth $200,000, then that homeowner is remitting a $2,000 bill underneath the, the referendum into all the units. So our tax rate is about 30% of that pie of that, that $2,000. So that's what we would collect. The school is the biggest portion. But if the school rate drops, as we anticipate it will, then the city's portion does go up slightly, but the resident is still paying only 1%, plus the referendum.
So my last question perhaps. Schools, the schools lowering their tax rate this year by around 14 cents, that'll change the ratio under the cap.
Correct.
But the taxpayer is still paying the full, in your example, $2,000. Where's that 14 cents that the school district lowered ending up going to?
So last year, we had anticipated that our tax bill, I believe, would be about 650, or the, the portion that would go to the city on that same tax bill would go 650,000 or $650 to the city. I believe in 2019, it's about 618. So again, we overestimate, not knowing exactly what each of the different entities are actually going to certify, because the state may change things between now and then, which is why we have to advertise higher than we are actually going to certify the rate, right? Because there are, there are unknowns that happen between now and then. So again, we can say about $650 will go to the city portion, not knowing exactly what all those entities will do, but it will likely be a little bit less. And I do want to make one other note that there have been no changes to the budget forms, but as you've probably seen in the news about the 911 lit funding, that if that does complete through the process, then please note in the minutes that the dispatch costs in the 2020 budget would go to zero when we get the, the budget order from the state.
Okay. I hope all the counselors understand that with the lit. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tammy. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bob Harkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerry?
Yes.
Jemake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion carries seven zero.
Rather the next item, ordinance 19-44, custom commerce park amendment four, Dane.
Evening council, the record Dane Crabtree with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the proposed amendment to the custom commerce park PUD specific to lot one, on which the Athenum and Construction Building sits, to permit light industry uses as defined by the UDO, as well as a children's recreational facility in order to bring the existing Carter's Play Place into compliance. The addition of the children's recreational facility use is the only revision to the PUD since its introduction at the September 9th council meeting. This item received a public hearing at the October 7th Plan Commission meeting, where it also received a unanimous favorable recommendation. This item is up for adoption consideration this evening, Eric Douthat of Church Church Hill in Antrim is present this evening, he does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for questions, as am I if there are questions and staff, thank you.
Do I have a motion on ordinance 19-44? Move to approve ordinance 19-44, custom commerce park amendment four for BDX. Motion for approval by Bob Horkey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cindy Spaljery, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljery.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item has been removed from the agenda, so on to ordinance 19-54, City of Westfield creating new fund, Cindy.
Yeah, ordinance 1954 is, just this ordinance just allows me to create the fund for the food and beverage to 111 and for the food and beverage tax to be positive into, back into port.
So right now the food and beverage is just dumped into the general fund, and this is going to specify it in a specific way so we can track it better.
It is in 101, 129, now it'll be in 111, 129, so we're just creating a different fund to keep track of it.
Do I have a motion on ordinance 19-54?
So moved.
Moved by Cindy Spaljery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake, discussion. No discussion, ordinance 1954, clerk, please call the roll.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljery.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
That ends old business, I will move on to new business, first item, ordinance 1955, does require a public hearing tonight, so Pam, introduction.
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the council, Pam Howard with the Community Development Department, before you this evening for public hearing, I have a 100% voluntary annexation for approximately 17 and a half acres to be part of the Chatham Hills subdivision in Chatham Hills PUD District. This item is eligible for public hearing this evening and is anticipated to be in front of you for adoption at your November, your first November meeting, I am available if you have any questions, thank you.
Okay, so I will now open the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak on the 100% voluntary annexation of Chatham Hills Phase 13, that is opened at 8:14. Seeing no great rush to the podium and time moving fast, we will close the public hearing at 8:15, and we will bring this back up at the November 11th meeting for consideration. Ordinance 1956, introduction on the Westgate PUD amendment.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. President, members of the council, Pam Howard filling in for Caleb Ernest this evening, before you for introduction, I have an amendment to the Westgate Planned Unit Development District, this 230 acre site is located on the north side of 166th Street between Town and Eagle Town Roads, and is currently zoned the Westgate PUD. The proposed amendment modifies the architectural standards, as well as adding additional architectural standards and modifying the amenity requirements of the district. I do have John Davishewitz with Nelson &amp; Frankenberger here to present details of the petition, after which both he and I are available for questions, thank you.
Thank you and good evening, for the record, my name is John Davishewitz, I'm a land use professional, a law firm in Nelson &amp; Frankenberger, I'm here tonight on behalf of Lennar Homes of Indiana, with me this evening is Ty Reinhardt on behalf of the applicant, as well as Jim Schinnerer, an attorney with our office. By way of general background, the Westgate PUD was approved by the then Town Council 13 years ago in 2006. Earlier this year, the applicant received primary plat amendment approval for the development plan for the Westgate community. The community is generally located on the east side of Town Road between 166th Street and Little Eagle Creek Avenue. The matter before you this evening is the introduction of an amendment to the Westgate PUD as indicated by staff, Lennar is requesting an amendment to the approved PUD, which they believe will encourage architectural diversity and enhance the overall streetscape within Westgate. The proposed amendment does not increase the subdivision density, alter minimum lot standards, or modify the approved primary plat. The current architectural standards in the existing PUD do not require specific items. The ordinance today does not require masonry in the terms of brick or stone on the homes, any of the homes within the Westgate PUD, it does not require any rear architecture of homes backing up to Purman Roadways such as 166th Street, and the ordinance does, also does not require enhanced decorative treatment regarding garage doors. Lennar proposes additional architectural requirements for all homes within Westgate, as well as homes located on high visibility home sites, which include the following, which are illustrated on the exhibit now on display. So all homes within the development will have decorative garage doors, all homes on corner lots, those identified with the red dots, so throughout the entire community, all single family homes on corner lots would have masonry, brick or stone wainscote on all elevations, front side and rear of those dwellings, because they're high visible lots on corners, all homes along 171st Street, which is the drive that extends from our eastern perimeter adjacent to Ackerson Farms, all the way through the site, past Eagle Town Road, all the way interior over to Town Road, all of those homes would have a minimum masonry wainscote on the front elevation, that would be in addition to the corner lots, which would receive masonry treatment on all four sides. All homes facing Town Road would have a minimum brick or masonry wainscote, excuse me, entire first floor, so all those homes that you see, those homes that are south of 171st Street, along Town Road, facing Town Road, all those homes would have minimum first floor masonry on the front elevation facing Town Road. And then regarding 166th Street, which is along our south perimeter, all the homes you see identified here in yellow would add additional offsets along the rear elevation of those homes, in addition to the additional red and blue dots that you can see as they would be treated if they were corner or side lots, as specified on this plan. The standards just listed are enhancements to the existing PUD, again, the ordinance today does not require masonry, rear architectural enhancements, or garage door treatments, that's not a criticism, it's an observation, back in 2006 when the ordinance was adopted, that was pre-UDO, pre a lot of work by the Plan Commission to adopt and incorporate standards into your existing UDO, which is applicable today, but this ordinance approved in 2006 was in advance of that. The petitioner proposes the following revisions to the architectural standards, regarding roof pitch, today the ordinance requires a 712 roof pitch and a 612 roof pitch is proposed, a 612 roof pitch is the most common standard within home, the home building industry, and increased roof pitch to 712 results in increased cost for home buyers, as well as little, very little perceived value of streets, in streetscape enhancements. The petitioner believes that the enhancement to the overall Westgate community associated with the additional architectural standards that I enumerated, being proposed far exceed the perceived reduction in streetscape associated with a lesser roof pitch, so that's one modification that would be made to the existing architectural standards, a reduction from a 712 roof pitch to a 612 roof pitch. Secondly, townhomes in the Villa neighborhood, that's the area exclusively here, outlined in orange, there are additional townhomes that flank the park space here that aren't included in this, but this is exclusive to just those areas adjacent to the commercial real estate on the north side of the Midland Trail. This amendment would require brick and stone wainscote on the front elevation where it's not required today, but also permit vinyl siding as an exterior siding material on the remaining sides. This amendment is proposed by Lennar as a desire to offer a variety of home styles and diverse options within the community, which will appeal to a broad segment of the market, the standard only applies to the townhomes in the area identified in orange. The proposed requirement will allow Lennar to offer attached homes and more attainable values with a lower exterior maintenance costs, while at the same time enhancing the architectural appeal of these elevations with the inclusion of front elevations including masonry along the perimeter. The last item, as an amendment to the existing ordinance, is regarding garage placement for those lots that are 50 feet wide, those lots which this standard applies to are outlined here in yellow, and only those lots within the plan. The amendment would not require a garage to be recessed by 10 feet from the primary front facade or porch. Lennar believes that the current requirement, that requirement just described, will result in a more monotonous streetscape, with front porches extending forward to the garage resulting in an unintended snout design for homes on 50 foot wide lots, by removing this requirement, Lennar believes that a more natural or less forced, anti-monotonous streetscape will be accomplished. Likewise, Lennar believes this, along with the additional architectural enhancements that I described initially regarding masonry on all four sides of corner lots and other standards, will be an enhancement to the overall aesthetic, aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood. The last amendment is regarding amenities within the community. This outlines for you where existing amenities are located, there's the Midland Trail that will be incorporated through the site, there's a main amenity area that is, one change is being made to, and then there would be two pocket parks on the design where today the ordinance only requires one. With regard to that central amenity area, I'm gonna focus in on this area on the next slide, you'll see an island within the middle of that Stormwater Detention Pond, and to that island, there's a bridge, there's a pedestrian bridge, the existing ordinance requires a pedestrian bridge out to that island, and Lennar would propose to replace that pedestrian bridge and island in that amenity area with a second playground and park facility on the south end of development, which we believe will add additional value for residents within the community. Likewise, the addition of this amenity, the playground will be required, which is not required under the existing PUD. The issue that Lennar has with the existing requirement for the pedestrian bridge and island, they feel that'll be, I'll go back to that slide. This is something that there wasn't much focus on in 2006, but under today's geometric standards for the production of that pond facility and the safety ledges, they feel like that's gonna be a long-term maintenance issue for the HOA as they accept it, as well as the liability, there isn't really an example that they could point to of a good situation where something like that was provided, so really, as opposed to providing that pedestrian bridge and island within that pond, they would remove that, remove the potential liability and long-term maintenance costs for the HOA, and build the second swing set, playground, pocket park, that they feel better serve the residents of the neighborhood. So in conclusion, Lennar is requesting the proposed amendments, as they believe the amendments will encourage architectural diversity, enhance the overall streetscape within the community, and better serve the community with amenities. Later this month, on September 24th, we'll conduct a neighborhood meeting, we are providing approximately 60 notices via mail, that meeting on September 24th, we will email out to council members the specifics regarding that meeting on the 24th, it'll be held at City Services, and we anticipate a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission on November 6th, not the 4th, which is typically on the Monday, but because of voting, that meeting's gonna be on November 6th, on Thursday. We appreciate your time this evening, we'd be glad to address any questions you have now, and of course, as we move forward through the process, thank you.
Are there any questions, John?
John, in the ordinance language, it says that one of your exhibits is supposed to have the sample elevations, if you will, and it doesn't, is there a reason that that's not included now?
I'll have to take a look at that specifically, I don't, I don't think there's an omission in our proposed ordinance, I think in the current ordinance, there's a, there's a reference to Exhibit A, and that's a carryover from the existing PUD, there were, there were character illustrations of what homes might look like, and that's just a carryover, so there's no change, it just refers to the Exhibit A of the architectural standards from the original ordinance.
Okay, and wouldn't those need to be updated, since you're offering these amendments?
We would intend to provide some additional illustrations of proposed homes at the Plan Commission, but we're not proposing to change the character illustrations, because as incorporated into the current ordinance, they're just a snapshot of what might be built that would comply with the architectural requirements.
Thank you.
Other questions? I wanna just ask a couple of questions for clarification. Won't really matter in a couple of months when I'm not up here, but I remember this, this is one of the victims of the Great Recession, this was proposed and things were rolling, and then boom, could someone have walked in here, assuming that this product would sell in today's market, and just get approval to build what was approved back in 2006 without, without all the improvements that are being proposed?
Yes, the answer, the short answer is yes.
Okay, so Kevin, how many of these little ticking time bombs do we have out there? Do we know?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I think there's two other larger PUDs that were approved in that same timeframe, 2005, 2006, that have not yet come forward for development.
So like Ackerson would be one?
Ackerson and Time Note Crossing is the other one that I can think of, there may be another one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to APC. Pam, ordinance 1957.
Thank you and good evening, again Pam Howard with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening, I have an amendment to the North Point Planned Unit Development District to accommodate a new distribution facility. This 82 acre site is located at the northwest corner of 196th Street and Grassy Branch Road, and is currently zoned the North Point PUD District. The proposed amendment includes standards and exhibits related to architecture, landscaping, and lighting. Public hearing for this item is scheduled at the November 6th Plan Commission meeting, and it is anticipated to be before you for adoption consideration on November 25th. I do have the petitioner's representative, Russell Brown, here to present, after which both he and I will be available for questions, thank you.
Good evening, President Keen, members of the council, for the record, Russell Brown, an attorney with the law firm of Clark, Quinn, Moses, Scott &amp; Graun, 320 North Meridian Streets with 1100 in Indianapolis. This is an exciting time for me, first time I've been involved in a project that had a code name for it, as we filed this under Project 19 a couple of weeks ago, and the announcement made that Gordon Foods is the proposed developer, proposed new tenant at this location. As you know, North Point, previously Aurora, has been under reconfiguration for much of the last about four years, this property was added to the North Point PUD last summer, so this 80 acres was added last summer. The request here, this is the exact type of use that was contemplated in the Commerce Park area too, when we went through this development, we're ecstatic to have one user coming to take down a big portion of 80-plus acres. The amendment before you tonight has one definition change, four design standards changes, and then adds character exhibits and landscaping exhibits to the proposed, for this proposal. Tonight, we will have a little bit longer presentation as it relates to Gordon Foods itself, and then some specifics about the site as well. Bill Casey with Pinnacle Realty Services is here, as well as Chris White and Tim Cook with KSM is here as well tonight. Bill will come up and make a presentation related to who Gordon Foods is, what their desire is for this location, and the excitement that comes with adding desire is for this location, and the excitement that comes with adding more than five hundred thousand square foot proposed development in your community. That conclusion, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Bill?
Good evening, council members. Bill Casey, thirteen hundred Gazan Parkway, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Like to tell you a little bit about Gordon Food Service, and just who we are, and a little history on the company. There's a video on here, I'm not sure if it's going to play or not. I'll let you click in the middle. Is there an arrow or no? I don't know if it'll link out. Awesome, if you can full screen that. Just a minute fifty-two seconds. If sound. If you don't, if you don't, I could skip the video, or we can just watch it, and I'll play a few things.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Didn't know there was video.
We're the largest privately-held food distribution company in North America. These are our main focus of customers. We're not a broadline grocery distribution company, but we're a broadline food service distribution company. We also do operate a hundred and seventy-five stores. Currently have twenty-four distribution centers. These seven specialty companies are companies that we own and operate. You may be familiar with a number of our stores. As you saw the footprint, we have twenty-four distribution centers. We are in Canada and the United States as well. At the very beginning of that video, I'd like to just focus, we did start in eighteen ninety-seven. We're on our fifth generation of Gordon Food Service. Gordon family members that are still running and operating the company today. Stewardship and community engagement is very important to us. We focus on minimizing environmental impact, promoting social responsibility, ensuring corporate sustainability. This is a very big initiative for us in many facets that we function, not only in our business, but as they teach employees and as we go out into our own communities. In two thousand and twelve, we built our headquarters office, a new headquarters office. It's follow-the-all-lead principles, three hundred and eighty-six thousand square feet. We're on a hundred and fifty geothermal wells. It's a pretty impressive facility. It, it looks pretty nice on the outside, but it's super collaborative on the inside. It's, it's not over the top. We are a low-cost producer, but it does create a great working environment for the employees and for just bringing customers and training facilities and ongoing enrichment of all the employees. Big impact that Gordon Food Service has is a campaign we started a number of years ago called Hard to Serve. We support communities, we serve, maintain the legacy of charitable giving, through food donations from our distribution centers, stores, and shows. We're very active in disaster relief. We're very active in employee service opportunities. So the Hard to Serve campaign in general is brought out to all the divisions, not only at the headquarters, but each division. Each division, when I say a division, that would be the type of project that we're proposing here. And within that division, the group will decide what they really want to focus on as an effort within the community, and really serve on a greater capacity. And that way, maybe a number of employees that bring ideas, it might be the leadership, it might be a combination, and there'll be multiple efforts that happen on a local community level, not just on a global, and not just on a North American level, but right down to the local community. We also have Hard to Serve mission trips. The picture you see on the left there was a trip to Zambia, Africa. There were fifteen employees that were chosen to go on that trip and to serve, and this was with a pregnancy center that has been part of the Gordon family's work that they have done for a number of years. So they wanted to show some employees of kind of an organization they had been supporting for years. So the Hard to Serve campaign is, is very, it's a very important initiative amongst the community and the family in general. And then we do partner with multiple organizations. Here are just a small list, United Way, Habitat for Humanity, Truckers Against Trafficking are some examples. So we've been named the employer of choice for a, a number of years and a number of different reasons. We focus on innovation, we focus on technology, and we focus on making people's jobs a little bit easier, especially when there's hard labor work involved. So efficiency is driven by the right tools and best people. And so we have a lot of automation in our facilities, we have a lot of technology, we have a lot of training. I am a ten-year employee that's there, and I would consider myself a new guy. Most of the people on my team have been around twenty years. Usually, it's their first job out of college. They just stay. No one really leaves. They, they really train us, they teach us, they support us in a, in a great way, both from a work-life balance, and also just allowing us to do new things within the organization. Here's some examples of, of some of the employee benefits that they offer. They offer great health expense coverage, prescription drug coverage, vision coverage. We have, you know, your standard sort of healthcare, but I would say that my healthcare's pretty exceptional for a private employer. Some of our additional benefits that we have, we have a great 401K program with a, a very good match. With, the bottom left-hand corner is probably one of the more fascinating items. Gordon Food Service has a great profit-sharing program that they fund a significant amount on top of our 401K match. It's a, the percentage changes every year, but I like to use the example of if I save four percent of my own money, I usually have about eighteen percent in my retirement count at the end of the year. It's a pretty big number. We like to focus on innovation. Not just in innovative products, but here's an example, we, of, of some new items that we've come up with, the drop ship program, twenty-five thousand products, basically come through our system. So in the world of e-commerce, in the world of everyone wanting everything instantly to hold on to, to maintain and to retain our customers, we have to not really let them know how we get the products, we just need to get it to them. And through, through some innovative ideas, as our drop ship program and other focuses, we've been able to achieve that. Clear Choice Program is, is, is something unique to Gordon Food Service, although it's a trend within the industry right now. We came, came up with this program about eighteen months ago, and it's really to create transparency to cleaner ingredients, responsibly sourced, and sustainable products. Those are very important items to certain customers, so we needed to come up with a specific program where we could outline where these products exactly came from, exactly what's in them, and, and how were they sourced. Our private brands, and Thrive Farmers, the coffee beans that you see on the left there is a partnership that we have partnered with a group out of Guatemala. Thrive Farmers, really what it does is it takes the commodities, trading, negative aspects of commodities trading from the, trading from the farmer. In other words, farmers in third-world and second-world countries sometimes don't see the benefit of, of, they're, they're the least paid, and this program takes that out of it. So it's very clear in the cup of coffee, or the, the five pounds of, of coffee that someone's buying, what was paid to the farmer, and how it went through the entire supply chain. And that was our reason that we partnered with Thrive Farmers. We focus on warehouse efficiency and accuracy. Our warehouses are semi-automated. Really, the reason our warehouses are semi-automated, well, there's a couple of reasons, but we started to automate warehouses for speed and for efficiency and to move more boxes. And as we did it, we realized that it created, it created a better diversity to our workforce. It allows people of all generations to work there, because we've lightened the load, essentially. And that's a very grueling position, and we saw the turn, the turnover rate be somewhat high, and this way, it allows people to grow and, and stay within there. And we need people in those positions for a longer term, so that they can have leadership, teach folks within those positions what our culture's about, what our organization's about, so that we can sustain people. Here are a few pictures of some of the automation that will go within our new warehouse. We have ergonomic design, creates more opportunities for jobs, as I mentioned. We have a leading-edge design and technology and automation. So in our industry, our type of warehouse has multiple temperatures. We have a hundred thousand square foot freezer that operates at negative ten degrees. There's, there are certain automation tools that haven't existed to operate in that space successfully. We're seeing new innovation in those areas where we can create more automation to move those types of boxes under those extreme temperatures. We also have a large cooler space at about a hundred thousand square feet that is at thirty-five degrees. So the same there, I mean, you just deal with freezing, you deal with hydraulics and oils and, and different materials that don't handle well in those temperatures, but we're starting to see a lot of innovation in those areas, and so we're able to increase our automation within the facility. There's another example of, of just some of the mini-load cranes and dense case storage that will exist within the freezer and some robotic shuttles. So we view this as an opportunity here in Westfield, Indiana. We're excited. Whoops. Today, we employ more than seven hundred full-time employees in Indiana and two hundred part-time employees. So we're not new to Indiana, we've been here for a long time. We have more than forty-five hundred of our trucks and trailers are licensed in the state of Indiana, and we operate more than ten transportation branches already throughout the state. As I mentioned, the Gordon Food Service stores, we do have nineteen in the state of Indiana, six in the greater Indianapolis area, and we currently already pay more than seven million in taxes and fees to the state and local governments within Indiana. We, we, we view ourselves as a strong Indiana corporate citizen and have for years, and we're excited to, to look for more expansion within the state. This project is a multi-phase, multi-year investment. It says of up to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. We've seen this number move a few times. It's at least a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. I've seen numbers where it's more like a hundred and fifty million dollars. So I, I, we're, we're trying not to overshoot. We know that it will be a hundred and twenty-five million dollars over the five years. Startup through year five, we have more than four hundred jobs. I think the target number right now is four hundred and forty is what we have. But when we created this slide, and, and I've kept it that way, that I've been using for the last few months, I've just kept it at the four hundred. And point number three, the state-of-the-art facility boasting investment of more than thirty million in automation and technology. We have been under contract for our automation and technology design within this facility for about eight months. With the e-commerce world, with the demand on steel, with the demand on this technology, you have to put your down payment on and start your design on facilities way ahead of time, just to get your slot. And so we've been designing the facility, not knowing where it's going to land or exactly what it's going to look like, but knowing a general shape of what it's going to need to be. And that's where we know it's at least thirty million dollars. And that depends on the types of specific technologies we put within the different temperature zones of the building. And our proposed purchase of eighty acres and to construct a five hundred and sixty-one thousand square foot facility with the ability to expand an additional three hundred thousand square feet is the site that we are looking at here in Westwood. Here's our site plan. We'll talk to the specific items. I'll let Russell talk to those as we get into the ordinance, and then I can come back and answer any questions related to that. And as well, here is one of the character exhibits of our proposed building elevation and our entrance, and what we're proposing. Again, this is another one of the character exhibits that exists within the PUD ordinance. And as I mentioned, a lot of the automation that will exist within the facility of the three temperature zones, the automated features, we have an efficient design. This helps us reduce our labor, labor costs reduced by forty percent. Potential for sixty thousand cases right out of the gate per day, and then we'll be able to move up to a hundred and fifty thousand cases per day would be an end state of this facility. That's a lot of boxes that you're moving out of facility. And our order accuracy will be increased even higher, and I think we currently operate at ninety-six point five percent, but we need to get that into the ninety-nine percent So why Gordon Food Service? It's a revenue opportunity, semi-automated warehouse, advanced technology, high volume. We're a great community partner. Stewardship's a very important focus of our company. We give back to the community, we encourage our employees to work within the community. I know a lot of our employees will live within the community. If they're not already here, they will live here. We've been an employer of choice, the culture that we bring is an amazing culture. I came to Gordon Food Service, Gordon Food Service, as I said, ten years ago. I came during the real estate recession. I'm a real estate guy. My plan was to go plant my flag for two years till the recession went and leave. I don't see myself leaving. It's really been a great company. So four hundred-plus jobs, twenty-five dollar an hour average wages, and at least a hundred and twenty-five million dollar investment. Thanks.
Any questions for Bill or myself?
Will there be a store at this facility?
So you want to talk about Square Roots a little bit?
Oh, sure. There won't be a store at the facility. We, we don't have a store right on-site. There might be a store down the road closer to the community. Our closest one currently in this area is Fishers, Indiana. I think we did that one in two thousand and thirteen, sounds about right.
Anderson, there's a store at Anderson also.
Yes, yep. And at this facility, on the site plan, in the lower left-hand corner on one hundred ninety-sixth Avenue, there's a little space. On the lower left-hand corner, there's a little space there, and that's for a Square Roots operation. Square Roots is a partnership that we have entered into with Kimball Musk. It started in Brooklyn. It's a advanced farming technology center. From the outside, it, it looks a little bit like a farmer's market. There are some cargo containers that attach to what you would picture as a farmer's market, and within there are specific herbs, basils, that type of stuff that's grown. Within a cargo container, we can grow up to four acres worth of crops. It's year-round. The great thing about this new technology is what you can do is you can replicate the exact growing conditions of specific herbs and products that were grown at a certain time. So there's some very gourmet basils and chives and those sort of items that are out there that were grown in a specific region at a certain time, under a certain humidity, and kind of like a fine wine, that root has been saved, and now it's been recreated, and so you can recreate the environment that it's in to get these specific tastes. It's a, so that will be the one focus that will be on, on this site, but it, we won't have a store.
Another thing that's going to happen, there's going to be a lot of trucks coming and going, because this is a redistrict and going because this is a redistribution center, so you're going to be receiving food and redistributing food. Our roads could stand some improvement there, and we'll have to do that to accommodate this traffic.
Yes, yes.
Other questions?
How many trucks do you anticipate? And what's the likely routes that they're going to take?
I don't have the exact truck count number with me. We did provide them earlier on so that the city engineers could look at the road improvements that will need to be done on 196th Street and Grassy Branch as well. The primary routes that we see, as you see on the top of the proposed site plan with the cul-de-sac that's there, we ultimately see the majority of our trucks. So, if you look at all the area to the west of the building and to the north of the building, that would be where our trucks, where Gordon Food Service trucks are coming and going. So, that's where we're delivering product from, and that's where we will be, our own trucks will be coming back to the facility. So, what we primarily see is heading out the cul-de-sac, heading to the west, and then heading on to the road that is not yet completed through North Point up to Sheridan Road and out to 31, and then heading north and south on 31. We do also see trucks coming from, on 196th, from the west, and coming in from 31 and up through the site to Grassy Branch and entering the two entrance points on the northeast corner there. The lower entrance point with the staging area and the diagonal parking spaces is a staging area for over-the-road vendors that they would come in, so they're not parked out on any streets, they would come into our site, they wait there until they get their appointment. So, let's say their appointment's at 7:30 and they arrive at 7:00. They're not parked out on the road anywhere, they come in, they have to wait in our site, and then when their door slot opens up, they drive down to the south of the building, and that's where our receiving will be. And they would receive down at those doors, and then they would exit back out to the right side of the building and head up to that exit, let's call it, there, yep, and head out that direction. So, we don't, and/or they can leave, sorry, out the bottom south side of the site there as well. But, they wouldn't be leaving the other way. So, that's where our vendors would be coming in.
Okay. This is in the Commercial Two, I think, district, right, within the North Point?
Correct.
Beauty. I had a question. On your site plan, I noticed that it says something about a truck wash and a fueling area for these trucks?
Yes.
I don't think those are approved for North Point in Commerce Two. And staff would have to look into that, but I didn't see any provisions for that in your P E D language. So, it's something that you might want to look at, Russell?
We'll look at that, very specific question. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to A B C. Resolution 19-123, personal property abatement for 17001 Oak Ridge Road. Amanda?
Good evening, President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Amanda Repido with the Economic Development Department. Aptiv PPC has filed a personal property abatement request for an investment of approximately $9.2 million in research and development and IT equipment for their new facility that will occupy approximately 50,000 square feet within the Westfield Business Center located on Oak Ridge Road just north of 169th Street. Jason Shahan will be giving a short presentation on the nature of the business and the proposed project at the conclusion of my summary. The site is currently in an economic revitalization area which was approved in 2008. Since the economic revitalization area has already been established, council may consider and adopt the tax abatement for Aptiv this evening. This request is for a five-year personal property abatement which is structured the same as previously approved personal property abatement requests. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, otherwise I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jason for his presentation.
If you hear the presentation, any further questions?
Thank you, President Keen, City Council, good evening. My name's Jason Shahan, I'm Global Engineering Director for Validation for Aptiv, Advanced Safety and User Experience. I'm joined tonight by Dan Hill, who helps with our government and media relations, and also A.J. Lasley, who's our Global Engineering Director for Advanced Engineering, for Advanced Safety and User Experience. Got three slides today, I want to tell you a little bit about Aptiv, tell you a little bit about our project, and then how we can work together going forward. So, Aptiv, a couple of years ago, you might have known us as Delphi. We actually spun off a company called Delphi Technologies and then renamed and rebranded ourselves as Aptiv. We're a technology company really focused on mobility. We want to get folks to where they're going in a safer, greener, and a more connected way. Our focus right now is really bringing in the next generation of active safety, autonomous vehicles, smart cities, and connectivity. That's a quote from our CEO, Kevin Clark. You can see we're a fairly large company and fairly global, over 160,000 employees across the world in 44 countries. We have 18, over 18,000 engineers and scientists, largely software-focused, we do a lot of software development. Takes a lot of code to understand what all the sensors are telling the vehicle and to make the right decisions. We have 15 major technical centers around the world. It's a little bit about Aptiv. I can take questions at the end, should you have any. Next slide is about this project, and this is why I'm excited to be here. It will be Aptiv's Westfield Engineering Laboratory. We plan to bring $9.28 million worth of investment, 50 highly skilled jobs. We'll have engineers, scientists, technicians. One of our technical fellows will actually be a part of the 50. We have about a 53,000-square-feet lab planned, and it will do environmental testing. We test product throughout our development process, so as our engineers design product, they must go through environmental testing to make sure the design is good and it's manufacturable. We'll do product and material analysis, so we'll understand how our products work over time and in different environmental conditions. And we'll do on-vehicle development out of this laboratory as well. We'll have a place to park three vehicles inside, and we can understand, for example, how a forward-looking camera might work through a windshield, work with a heater, how a radar on a vehicle might work through different fascias and bumpers of different vehicles. So, that's an area we can do some on-vehicle development as well. Some of the photos you see here, so the top one is a top view of a vehicle, and really shows how we can provide almost a cocoon of safety around the vehicle. We have radars that we will put on all four corners of the vehicle, one in the front that can look ahead. These radars can tell you if there's a car beside you, it can read road signs, lanes of traffic, lines of traffic, things of that sort, cameras as well. And then we bring all these sensors together in a large control box where we can make decisions. Right below it is a room that is blue in color. This room is a significant part of our investment, it's almost a $900,000 room, and we do EMC testing, or electromagnetic compatibility testing, to make sure our boxes don't interfere with other things in the vehicle or other things in the environment, and then make sure our boxes are immune to other boxes as well. So, a pretty decent test facility called EMC testing. Other chambers you see in the lower right would be thermal chambers, humidity chambers, where we can simulate environmental conditions, taking the product to extreme minus 40C to plus 85C or plus 105C, depending on customer requirements. Next slide, please. So, we chose Westfield, very business-friendly environment, great to work with the mayor and his staff. The quality of life in Westfield's good. I'm a local kid from Kokomo, worked for Aptiv for about 30 years, so seeing Westfield and how it's developed is really exciting and exciting for our employees. The building we have planned, we actually brought a bus down for all the employees that will end up working there and took a photo. So, that's the crew of the 50, plus a couple bosses that snuck in to get their picture taken. So, together, we're trying to make the world safer, greener, and more connected. Any questions?
Questions of council?
Driverless cars?
One day, absolutely. Autonomous vehicles?
Can we sleep and let the car take us where we want to go?
All those things are being considered, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Let's see, this is a council consideration tonight, adoption consideration tonight. Amanda, just one question, this is a standard personal property abatement, five years, 20% a year for declining each year?
20% per year, that's correct.
Do I have a motion on Resolution 19-123?
So moved.
Moved by Joe Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jimmy. Any other questions or comments?
Well, as much as I hate to approve these, I think it's clearly the right thing to do. This is a great investment in our community, and although it won't bring immediate tax benefits, it will phase in over a fairly short time and be immensely beneficial to our community in the long term. So, very exciting project, anxious for you to get going.
Other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spolcherry?
Yes.
Mark King?
Yes.
Motion 7-0.
Okay, on to the item, Resolution 19-125, confirming establishment of ERA for North Point Industrial Park. Amanda, this does require a public hearing.
Yes. Again, for the record, Amanda Repido with the Economic Development Department. Resolution before you is a confirmatory resolution that establishes the economic revitalization area that was approved at your September 9th meeting by declaratory Resolution 19-121. This item is scheduled for a public hearing this evening. To refresh your memory, prior to council's consideration of any abatement requests, an economic revitalization area must first be established in accordance with Indiana statute. Similarly to what council approved back in 2015 in an area around South Park Drive, establishing North Point as an ERA would shorten the process for any future tax abatement requests in the business park. This process does not remove any approval power by council for future tax abatement requests in the park, it would just shorten the process from two meetings to one meeting. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any council questions before the public hearing? Amanda, if not, then I open a public hearing for the confirming of the establishment of an economic revitalization area for North Point Industrial Park. We open at 9:03. You may wish to comment on the establishment of an economic revitalization area? No stampede coming forth?
Tyler Mendenhall, 18473, Harvest Meadows Drive, here in Westfield. My property backs up to East Street, and there's quite a few developments going in there, just north of East Street, Midtown being one. They just talked about Gordon's Food Service. My concerns are with the high-end residential going in down there and the mixed use, how does the industrial area fit into that picture? To me, it seems like it's an odd fit to have a high-volume trucking company, so to speak, and then an industrial area right next to these $500,000 homes. And then my other concern would be traffic to be addressed sometime on East Street in that corridor. Other than that, no further comments.
Thank you very much. One other item for input here?
Hi, I'm Sharon Williams, I live at 807 East State Road 32, across from Wheeler Landing, and right next to Crew Car Wash. My particular issue has been and always will be your ability, any city's ability, including Houston, Texas, ability to provide a flush for each of the buildings that you're building and that you're going to build. The more people that you have imported into the area requires more flushing. One flushing is going to be at 166th Street and Town Road. So, you're going to put more houses there, it's going to be more flushing. The last thing that you did was at my residence, was flush it in my backyard. I didn't appreciate that, and I still don't appreciate that. I have been screwed, I don't know how many different times, by the theft that you tried to perpetrate on my property, and it started in 2007. I did write to the Senator and to the Attorney General, Jeff Sessions, and I find this deplorable. I think it's fine and dandy that you're growing, but you still have to have, no matter what you do, the ability to flush your stools and get them down the drain without stopping up. The city of Nobisville just had 100 homes that were flooded by Citizens Energy. The sewage deposit that you have at 166 and Eagle Town Road has an Indianapolis water tower, and on the 196th Street or something like that, you have another Citizens Energy. Now, you've got to be able to build your sewers and whatever it does, and it's got to work, or the city's not going to work. Now, there's been several problems, and one was at Gray Road and 116th Street, and that overflowed. If you're going to be giving human beings hepatitis for them to suffer the rest of their life and be in the hospital, that's going to be a pretty miserable living, and I will keep repeating this every time. I want to give you this so that you'll know what I'm talking about, the theft that Hamilton County, the city of Westfield perpetrated on me. I didn't appreciate it, so I did write to the FBI, United States Department of Justice. The other thing I would like to have is a complete accounting of the money that you are receiving and putting it into your budget. I would like the titles of all the people that are employed by the state of Indiana, and I would also like the amount of money that you're spending on the contracts, who you're spending, who gets the contracts and what they're for. The one that costs a lot of money is the roundabouts. Okay, that's a hell of a lot of money that you're spending willy-nilly to the different corporations. I find that deplorable. I want a very basic piece of information that tells me exactly what's incoming and exactly what you're spending, because you're spending and you're getting bonds, and that's up in the air. Who knows what's going on? I want to really know, and that ought to be simple enough. Yes, I know that. My daughter worked at the school at Nobisville as an executive secretary for 25 years. She was, she got a job at Anthem.
Mr. Williams, this is about the.
I'll clarify.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, but it said any other item, so I did. Okay, well, shut me up, Dee, okay. Holly?
For the clerks. For the clerks, Penis, the first comment is really under the public hearing portion. This would be comments from citizens, items not on the agenda. Are there any other people who wish to speak on the public hearing on the resolution of confirming the establishment of economic revitalization area? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing at 9:09. This is an adoption consideration item. Do I have a motion concerning Resolution 19-125?
Move to approve Resolution 19-125, confirming establishment of an economic revitalization area for North Point Industrial Park.
Motion by Jimmy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck Lehman. Any comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spolcherry?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim A?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, that concludes business, now we're on to residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda may do so, we've already had one. Are there any other people who would like to address the council? We have any cards, Kevin? One gentleman?
I didn't know I needed a card, I apologize.
Just fill it out afterward.
And this might be the wrong forum for this, I'm not really sure. It's about something from the agenda today. Oh, Ken Tucker, two thousand and three, two thousand and one, Westfield, Indiana, says two thousand and seven. It's about Grand Park, and most specifically the, try to, the operational portion of the budget. I noticed, and I know you spoke with the mayor about the article that you started, not necessarily agreeing with everything that was in there. And some of this information I have is from there, so if it's wrong, I apologize to everyone here. Questions I do have about it is, I'm trying to remember, as a young man who bought his home here in Westfield in two thousand and seven, one of the few people that was able to back then. And I know this was a big issue, Grand Park and Grand Junction were kind of intertwined in terms of the conversation in the community. And you said it was eighty-five million, not a hundred, that was recorded? Okay, and when is that TIF going to be, is it twenty twenty-three? Is that when we're thinking it's gonna be paid off in full? The TIF bond, eighty-five million, earlier today?
There's, to my recollection, there's three TIF bonds, John, and I think they're twenty-five-year TIF bonds, twenty-year TIF bonds. So, the capital debt would be paid off in twenty years.
Okay, twenty years.
Now, there's the operation money, and then there's the debt. The Star mistakenly reported that people expected all of the debt for Grand Park to be paid off by the year twenty twenty-three. That was total error. That is when we expect the TIF districts to be able to totally cover the bond payments.
So there's still time left in that, but really more my question, I think it's from the budget, again, this is from the Star. It said that last year, the operational fund that was taken from food and beverage tax was four hundred thousand for.
I don't know anything was taken from food and beverage. I don't understand what you mean.
Well, I'm trying to, I thought somewhere in the article it said that four hundred thousand dollars.
This, yeah, the food, the food and beverage tax has gotten thoroughly confused with the operations of Grand Park. Before Grand Park, our food and beverage tax income was.
Five hundred thousand?
Approximately five hundred, okay?
Now it's roughly.
Now it's over a million dollars. Also, several years ago, the state passed a law that said that a food and beverage income must be put into its own separate account.
And that's what you guys.
And that's, yeah, that's exactly what we did today. And then there's been discussion, I mean, my opinion to our budget people was, hey, Grand Park generates a vast majority of the food and beverage tax. Why shouldn't, you know, Grand Park be able to use that for its operations? And it's not just its operations. You know, the big challenge, well, as we backed up earlier, the purpose of Grand Park was to create a tax base.
Absolutely.
And would you agree it has done that?
Yeah, I would imagine.
And in order for us to continue to maintain Grand Park as a premier facility in the country, because we will have competition, why? Because it is so successful. In order for it to remain so successful, we need to put funds back into it to keep it competitive across the nation.
And then, so, again, this is from the Star. It said that in the twenty twenty budget, that the operating expenses expected to double to eight hundred thousand? Is that, is that accurate?
The Star said the operating budget, I think you just saw, where were we? Six million will be our total expenses next year.
And then we'll be making.
Now that is.
After next year, right, self-sustaining, I believe this will be called.
I'm trying to make it self-sustaining, yes. Let's be clear, the profit is to the city? Beg your pardon? The, I'm sorry. The profit, the profit of Grand Park is the tax base it's creating.
So it being self-sustaining next year?
I would, yeah, that's our whole goal, I mean.
And when someone that does happen, then any money that comes from food and beverage, does that stop, or does that continue to go into Grand Park to help sustain it?
That'll be up to how every year the council designs the budget. Yeah, but that's where.
Run it about way, that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, really, the profit of Grand Park is not that Grand Park makes a million dollars a year. It is, Grand Park was intended to be a, an amenity to the city that makes the city unique, that we.
An incubator of business.
That, an incubator. We just saw two huge announcements tonight. And one of the reasons I think these people came here is because Grand Park creates, besides a tax base, it creates an amenity that attracts, it's made Westfield a place where people want to be. And where people want to be, employers will locate.
And I just, I'm hoping that once we get to that self-sustaining part, that money that we're giving to Grand Park can go somewhere else to, whether it's tools or wherever it might be.
Ah, well.
But that's.
That's a, that gets back to what Tammy just talked about, giving, you know, this tax thing is difficult, thank you.
If I could just make one comment, too, I can remember the time when we worried about the debt of the schools, and we're paying the schools off, I mean, the school district will pay the high school debt off next year, paying Cary Ridge off the next year, two years after that Oak Ridge is paid off. That frees up money for other things, so sometimes you go into debt, but that to fix cost, and when that goes away, you have money freed up for other things. Our money that doesn't be, is spent on anything. Any other questions? If not, we're down to council comments, any council members have any comments?
The APC met last week, we had a rather long agenda as well. I'll try to be as brief as possible. We approved a detailed development plan for an investment over on South Park Drive, and also for an expansion of Roundtrippers Building there. We approved Alpha Ta, Lots one to three, overall development plan and site plan. We sent a positive recommendation to this body on Hundred and Eighty-first Street PUD, which we acted on earlier. Also, a positive recommendation on PUD for Rights Property Group at Grand Park. Likewise, the positive recommendation for the PUD for Union Square at Grand Junction, which we acted on earlier. The Poplar Street Town Homes PUD did not receive a recommendation. It was a tied vote, four to four, and there were no other motions, so that comes to us without a recommendation at a future meeting. An overall development plan and site plan for South Park subdivision Lot One was approved. We held public hearings on Clayborne Farms by Dell Webb. PUD, also public hearings for Dar Town Crossing, PUD Amendment One. The Maple Knoll, PUD Amendment Four. The Trails, PUD Amendment Three. And Custom Commerce Park, PUD Amendment Four. There were no public comments on that, and that was ready to move forward, so that did receive a favorable recommendation. And our last public hearing was Chatham Hills, PUD Amendment Seven. Let's see, no, actually, that wasn't, that's not the case. And there are a couple more here. PUD for Grand Park Village, PUD Amendment Three. And also related to that, the overall development and site plan for that. And I believe the last item was Village Park Plaza Two, PUD. And that, the PUD received a public hearing, and also the overall development plan and site plan. That was it, we were out of there before eleven.
Are there other council comments? Other than the fact we obviously have a long meeting ahead of us somewhere with all those items?
I'd just like to thank Gordon Foods and Mr. Casey for his presentation tonight, and officially welcome you to the city. We're anxious to see you turn dirt, and we're excited about the opportunities we have together. And we certainly want to welcome your employees as they come and as you go through the hiring process. Obviously, we think we've got a wonderful city, and we're glad that you're gonna make it a little better and work with us to do that. So thank you for being with us tonight.
Just a reminder, we will have a meeting on October twenty-eighth at the Event Center, Grand Park Event Center. With that, mayor, comments from you?
Yeah, thank you very much, and again, we certainly welcome Gordon. Both of these announcements with Aptiv and Gordon, I mean, just, it's really beginning to now show counsel, and you should be very proud of the work you've done over the past several years. You heard from both of them that they were interested in locating in a community that is of quality, that can attract people. And I think what these two are saying is that you've done just that, and I know. And we discussed, I think one time we met earlier, I have a very good friend of mine that spent his entire career just about with Gordon Food Service, and he speaks so highly of, and I saw the community involvement and the family considerations with Gordon. So, as I said in our press release, I know you'll fit right in. And the same thing with our Aptiv people right up the street in Kokomo. Yeah, Joe, someday they're gonna come up with a car where you can sleep while you're driving it. So, we'll, hopefully, being here in Westfield, we'll hurry that all along, so. It's gonna have, well, no, you'll be around a little while longer, it's okay. So, with those two announcements, it's a huge time here in Westfield. Thank you. But quickly, just two or three other things, we had a very successful bulk trash day, thanks to Jeremy Lawler, Public Works, and to Kristen Sparks and her customer service people for seeing that happens. The latest little quick construction update. I came through Thirty-two and Ditch Road today. The signal heads are not yet in place, but the wires are all strong, so that's supposed to be up and running in the next couple weeks. So I know we've all been waiting for that, and I know the school system will be looking forward to that with the, with the school facility transportation being nearby. Also, two groundbreakings coming up, next week we will have the Westfield Boulevard, which is the piece south of, from Thirty-two, what is now called Poplar Street, going south through the future Millennium Development, down to Hundred and Sixty-Ninth Street. We'll finally break ground on that, it's ready to go. In October thirty-one, we will break ground on the Grand Junction. I think you've heard of that for the last couple years. So, big night, big agenda, great stuff, thank you.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
For Jim A, is there a second?
Second.
Second Bob Horkey, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. The Cardinals are losing.